Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
School Committee Chair report. I have nothing to report at this time. Resource Committee.
Resource Committee, we met this past Thursday. We are going to have a budget update tonight, which will cover a number of things that are on the agenda. But one of the things we talked about is our enrollment being down by 262 students this year. 170 without pre-K, and we know that always affects our Chapter 70 money. We now have 5,320 students in the Pittsburgh School System. We discussed technology. Director Spinney continues to do an outstanding job with our technology department. She submitted the E-Rate, which is now complete. She also talked about the purchase of 75 new units to support our hybrid in remote learning and 240 Chromebooks for MCAS. There will be a couple of things on the agenda tonight, such as Laurel Street School and the Flack Building will be on the agenda. That's it for.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens, you move right into the school building needs, please.
Building. Again, we had another good meeting on school building needs. The director talked about what some of the things they did on April vacation, evaluation of the Pittsburgh High School roof and the bid is to be posted. Looked at the sprinkler system on the baseball field. Rango had sewer issues, which were fixed. The Long Joe attic is getting its second bid. Ceiling replacements at South Street School, that is completed. Crockerfield repairs to the grandstand walls, bleachers. The Field House getting new gutters and downspouts. The turf has been fertilized, which is ongoing. MSBA accelerated repairs at South Street. The boiler has been completed. 99% of the roof has been done. Mr. Shalafu also purchased 25 new air filters for the small rooms in the building. And also, we talked about the Laurel Street and the Flack Building being returned to the city. That's all I have for the report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Policy Subcommittee, Mr. Horgan.
Nothing new to report at this time.
Any questions or concerns or comments? Seeing none, Student Support Committee, Ms. LaBelle Pierce.
So I wasn't here last week, when we had the update. So I'll just update you about our most recent meeting. Basically, it was just a review of the reading materials that we're looking to purchase in the district. And we've got a nice overview of all of the variety of supports that they'll offer teachers. And I understand that you guys corrected the terminology. It's not like we're adopting a curriculum. We already have a curriculum. It's just materials to support that. And we were pretty impressed by the amount of online and additional materials that come with that resource. But that was the entire subject of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none. School Personnel Committee, I have nothing to report at this time. Any questions? Seeing none. Executive Committee. Nothing to report at this time as well. And now we come to our Student Representatives section. Mr. Mara or Ms. Harding?
Hi. So today we have to talk about, which is always, our first week of May, which is Teacher Appreciation Week, which is a very important week to remember everyone to talk and be kind to your teachers and especially to show, as we always do, we appreciate it for our teachers and all that they do for us. And just give an extra thank you and make sure that they understand how much we appreciate them.
This week, we find out that for the second year in a row, Pittsburgh High made it into the list of best high schools. This list has developed for many years. And for the last two, Pittsburgh High has met the criteria to earn the recognition. So we're very proud of that at Pittsburgh High.
Thank you.
For the week, next week, the week of the 10th, there looks to be a COVID-19 Pfizer vaccine clinic in Pittsburgh, which you're very excited about. And it looks to be at FHS and Goodrich Academy to host a clinic. The schools are interested in trying to get information from students 16 to 18 and their families on whether they'd like to get the vaccine and their interest looking forward. So if you are interested, if you could reach out, that'd be great to the schools.
This year, the MCAS exams will take place the last week of the school year, so June 7th to June 11th. Students in the class of 2022 will take English and math, as well as the class of 2023. And then the class of 2024, the freshmen, will take the biology, MCAS, all of which are required for graduation and/or consideration for the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship.
And just a few of the important dates that are coming up. We have on the May 20th is the NASIS induction into the National Honor Society for Native Students at the Pittsburgh High level, which is exciting. And we also have the seniors are looking close to their last day classes, which for most is May 26. And then we are going into AP classes, AP tests around this time and heading into, leading into the end of the school year, June 11th. Lots of dates and events packed in until the end.
Finally, one of the last things we wanted to talk about was we have relays at Pittsburgh High this year, which is very exciting because it kind of restores some sense of normalcy. And yeah, that's all we have to report for this week. So thank you all very much.
So is that going to be a full relay again as normal, or how's that going to work?
No, we're going to run three races. So we're going to run freshmen versus sophomores. And then we're going to run junior girls versus senior girls and senior boys versus junior boys. So we're going to run three races. It's only at the high school level this year, unfortunately. We get the whole district together, but.
All right, great. Thank you. Okay. That's what? Is that next week?
Next week.
Okay, yeah, okay, great. Any questions, comments? Thank you. Thank you both for your report. Approval of the minutes, the regular school committee meeting of April 26, 2021. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Motion made and second to approve the minutes of April 26, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. It is unanimous. Thank you. Executive Session not at this time. Now we move into the Communications category of the agenda. Ms. Yes, Ms. Craig.
So two good pieces of news. The first is Pittsburgh Public Library will be open with regular hours as of May the 10th. And as many of us who love the library and use the library know, they have kept going throughout the pandemic, which has been a godsend. And it'll be really exciting when they are fully open. The other piece of information is that we have a date and time for the low-cost vaccine clinic that B-Positive Therapy Pets does in partnership with Second Chance Animal Services of East Brookfield and Friends of Pittsburgh Dogs. This will occur at our Pittsburgh Fire Department on Saturday, June 26. The usual times for this are 10 to noon. It will be done by appointment only. So please watch social media and the Sentinel and area media for more on that. Really exciting. We had another one in May of 2020, but it is time for people to get their animals vaccinated. And we're very happy to continue working with Second Chance. This is our 10th year of offering these low-cost vaccine clinics in Pittsburgh, which are, of course, open to all, not just Pittsburgh pet owners.
Thank you, Ms. Craig. Any questions, comments? Anyone else wishing to make a communication statement at this time? Seeing none. Has anyone signed up for public comment, Mr. Superintendent?
No.
There is none. Thank you. Now we move into the Superintendent's Report. Mr. Jokla.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I'd actually like to start off with some real excellent news on two of Pittsburgh High School students who have been accepted to Harvard University. Tonight with us, we have Verda Tete and Samari Velazquez Curuskiyo and Principal Jeremy Roach with his virtual background here. So welcome, everybody. And Jeremy, do you want to just give a brief introduction of the two students with us tonight? And then they can take questions or talk about their journey on how they have spent their time here in Pittsburgh and how they've been prepared to attend Harvard or what other schools they were accepted to.
Sure. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, yeah. I'm in a hockey arena, so the background actually works. So you don't want to see what's behind me right now. I mean, I would say Samari and Verda, you know, they're amazing representatives of the best that Pittsburgh Public Schools has to offer. Their ability to, you know, gain acceptance into some of the most selective universities in the entire world is a byproduct of their intelligence, for sure, but their perseverance, their effort, you know, and their ability to really engage with everything that was going on around them in the school and take advantage of those opportunities. For me, it's a proud moment, you know, like graduation is. You know, at graduation, when we have 262 members of the class of 2021 received their diploma, that's a proud moment because each one of those individuals has a story. Well, for Samari and Verda, this is a proud moment because, you know, the effort that they've put in over the years, you know, has led to these amazing opportunities. Opportunities that really, you know, not a lot of people earn because it's so ultra-competitive. And I think it's just a testament to everything that is about these two. So, you know, again, I would say it's just an honor to have gotten to know them. And the final thing that I would point out is I have gotten to know them, and I'm lucky in that sense because several years ago, they had seen, you know, that there was an issue in our school that needed some support. And that was, we enroll a lot of kids during the school year. And a lot of times, those kids, they come in, and it's, you know, we're not a huge high school, but we're not small either. And, you know, it can be challenging to make the transition, to move from another community or another state or another country in some cases in the middle of the year. So they created the Student Ambassadors Program. It's a club that we have, really, that, you know, is, I think, upwards of 50 students now who are ambassadors, who essentially ease the transition for a new student into Pittsburgh High School and welcome them. And again, I think that's just an example of the type of people they are, too. And not only are they amazing academically and all the things that go into getting accepted to Harvard and other schools, but they're even better people. So that's what I would say about them. And they can certainly tell you a little bit about, you know, some of what they've experienced and some of the other opportunities that they've earned as well. In particular, I know Samari had a long list that came forward at the beginning of marriage or mid-marry. So I'll stop there.
So which student would like to give a quick summary of their story and journey through Pittsburgh Public Schools and their next steps?
I can go first.
Okay, thank you, Verda.
Thank you. I wanted to start off by saying thank you for having the two of us here. It's such an honor for us to be recognized in this way. And I know Mr. Roach talked a lot about how, you know, we persevered and we tried hard. But I think that a lot of credit does have to go to the Pittsburgh Public Schools. I think that there's really a lot of opportunity in the system. And it creates, there's a lot of support, too, that creates a breeding ground for success. So you made it easy for us. Thank you. So in terms of my story, I guess, I came to America in third grade. And my family moved here from Ghana. And we came primarily because we wanted more opportunity. There wasn't a lot of job, economic growth in Ghana, and there wasn't much of a future. So we came to America definitely looking for a better future. And I guess I can say we definitely found that. And it's funny because I actually met Samari in fourth grade. I remember so vividly. We were in South Street in Miss A's class. And we would like race to, like, with math problems and like challenge each other who can do it faster or who can, you know, solve it in different ways. So we go way back, I would say. She was one of my first friends in America. And we separated. I went to Memorial, met new friends, you know, learned a lot. And then I went to Pittsburgh High School and joined the Honors Academy. And again, there's just so much support. And I think one of the greatest things, too, is that the high expectations in the Honors Academy, right? You get challenged. You are expected to do more. And you have teachers around you that are going to support you in doing more, but also teachers who are going to be honest with you and say, hey, Verda, I know you can do better than that. I've seen you, you know, you can do more. You can achieve more. And so they push you. There are expectations. And through that, the support and expectation, you get to grow and learn more than you could ever if you were just left to be. So I really do think that the teachers that I've always had through all the Pittsburgh Public School System at South Street, Memorial, and Pittsburgh High are so incredible. And the faculty, the staff, just every part of it has just been such an important part of my success today. So thank you all. I could not stand here and say it alone, that's for sure. And I am so very appreciative of it. Thank you.
Verda, this is the mayor. Any plans for what you're... Did you say what you were going to be studying in college? Oh, did we? Froze up here?
There she is. She's back.
Verda, did you hear me? What would you be majoring in at college? Do you know yet?
But I think I'm going to go into biochemistry because I plan on going to medical school after that. That's one of my goals.
Great. That's impressive. What a powerful story. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Everybody wants to come to America. That's right. There's a reason for it, isn't it? It's the best place in the world. Thank you.
It really is.
Okay, Samari, you're next.
Okay. Can you guys hear me good? Okay. I, well, I have sort of a similar situation with Verda in the sense of, I guess, moving a lot when I was younger. I was born and raised for a couple of years in Puerto Rico, and I moved back and forth. For the first couple of years, the last time I moved to Massachusetts, I think I was 10 years old. No, was I 10? I don't know. It was for fourth grade. It was near that time. And that's when I met Verda, as she said, in our fourth grade class. And yeah, so I went to McKay instead of Memorial. I, that's where I started, like, expanding, you know, meeting new people and everything. And I had two older sisters who sort of went through the same process I did. And they were in my grade for everything. It was always the same way me and Verda had our own competitions in fourth grade. I had it with my sisters. So yeah, and coming into high school, I remember with Student Ambassadors that Mr. Roach mentioned, Verda came up to me and proposed that idea. I think it was maybe our freshman year, like, right off the bat, pretty early on. I think it was something that we always wanted to do. And when we got the opportunity to do it, we were both really proud of that. And yeah, definitely I agree that I have to give props to just the Pittsburgh Public Schools for giving us the resources and the teachers. Like, there are so many teachers in the school that, like, I call like my second parents, like Ms. O'Neil or even my guidance counselor at school. They're amazing. I can go to them for anything, school or even not school-related. And they're just, I know that they're a great system to have. And yeah, and they've been with me every step of the way, and I really do appreciate that. Yeah, so I also like subject into Harvard University, but I actually committed to Stanford instead. And I'm going into that for international relations. And I would love to study abroad and ultimately, like, intern or work at an embassy. That's something that I've always wanted to do. Yeah.
That's fantastic. And I think a lot of us would love to switch chairs with you and go to the Foreign Embassy, too, and intern and go on your journey to California. Are there any other questions from the School Committee members for either Verda or Samari?
Congratulations.
You have a great future ahead of you.
Congratulations.
I can't think of really a better way to start off Teacher Appreciation Week from hearing it from two students who came to South Street, probably when Mr. Thompson was there. And that must have been one fourth grade, Mr. Thompson. So a power fourth grade. And that whether it's McKay or Memorial or Long Joe and Pittsburgh High, it's really a team effort on behalf of all our teachers and staff. And what really impressed me is, you know, as the school leadership team starts talking about the future and what we want to see of Pittsburgh Public Schools, how you started a club to make it a welcoming and belonging place for students who are moving into Pittsburgh and specifically Pittsburgh High. So I really appreciate you taking the lead on that as students and having the sponsorship and support of our teaching staff and high school administration is fantastic. So thank you and good luck on your next journeys, whether it be in Cambridge or in Palo Alto. So have fun.
Thank you.
One more comment. Mr. Roach could even speak to it. I know we met last week to give out awards for the Alumni Association. But one of the things that we talked about, and Mr. Roach talked about, and Mr. D talked about in the guidance, is this is probably one of the most talented classes to go through Pittsburgh High School in quite some time. So these two young ladies are not only at the top of this class, but at the top of one of the most talented classes to go through the high school. Again, congratulations, ladies. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could just add, I mean, I hadn't elaborated on it, but Samari touched upon it. I really do think one of the biggest assets that the Pittsburgh Public School District has is their teachers. I mean, not only are they teachers, but they become your friends. I mean, in certain cases, your parents, your role models. And I think it's so incredible. It's true. It's so incredible to have teachers that are so willing to go, in a sense, beyond the call of duty in their field and to really put so much effort into being good people and good teachers.
Teachers are definitely what makes our school our school. So I agree.
Okay. Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is the second and final reading of the school calendar that was presented to the School Committee last week. We didn't have any comments then. I don't know if there are any other additional comments. It's on the agenda as an action item for this evening. So with that said, then we really just have some budget items. And tonight, we kind of have our first formal update to the School Committee of the budget, which was presented to the Resource Subcommittee last week. So Mr. Shalafu now will now be sharing. And as Craig's getting set up, I'll just go over the first couple of slides and then Craig will take it away from there. So I'm going to look to my right because I guess it's just easier for me to do that. So as we have been working this year with a couple of different partners, one of whom is, who the School Committee approved last year, Carrie Purcell of Focus Schools, we're really focused on making commitments to the future, on equity, access, opportunity, and growth and achievement. And our theory of action is if all staff, families, and community partners collaboratively identify and remove barriers to personal growth and achievement, then every student will be ready to learn and access high-quality co-instruction and social emotional supports. So we're going to work diligently to eliminate equity gaps across the district and really create opportunity and access. As we just heard from a couple of students, it's one thing to have access, but then to give them opportunity and options. You know, to have the choice between Harvard and Stanford is probably one of the best options that we can prepare our students for. So a few of the pillars that we're looking to implement next year and when we do present the budget book at the first meeting in June, curriculum that's accessible to and reflective of all students, a tiered system of academic and social emotional support across the district. As I mentioned earlier, the working with the outside consultant with two schools and central office, but also growing our staff. One of my focuses as a superintendent over the year has been to build, you know, leadership depth and capacity at all our schools. And that's not just principals, assistant principals, or the SPSAs. It's identifying teacher leaders to help all our students make Pittsburgh the best urban district in the state. And again, just bringing back the diversity recruitment plan that we presented a couple of meetings ago. And then really, as the two students who are graduating did, district-wide, we want to make sure our schools are a sense of welcoming and belonging and safety for all students, parents, staff, and all members of the community. So this year is really a momentous year for school districts in Massachusetts and, I think, across the country. But the Student Opportunity Act was really targeted towards, you know, students living in urban communities. A few years ago, the School Committee advocated our local legislators to try to level the playing field between urban districts and non-urban districts. The legislators heard that advocacy loud and clear, and they passed a law that would bring student funding up to a more equitable level in over seven years. This past year, the state wasn't able to provide any funding towards that. But now this year, or I should say, looking ahead to next year, they're going to be phasing in that funding over six years or the remaining six years of that seven-year timeline. So assuming that the state's financial capability is there, that amount will increase each year. And again, the law, as you can see on the slide here, is Chapter 132, 2019. So it's a significant investment in education, public education, targeting students who largely live in communities like Pittsburgh.
I think it's important to recognize and talk about our school budget. And as Bob mentioned, the Student Opportunity Act and the proposal that we had submitted a year and a half ago, and then again this past year, about a $2 million investment in the Student Opportunity Act and its deliberateness for us to address our low-income students, our Ls, and the psychological needs of our students. And then along with that is also the, having gone through the last year, the pandemic, the amount of grant funds that have been available to us since the inception and then moving forward as we get into Esser II and Esser III. But I thought it important just to recognize the amount of grant funds that have been made available to us and will continue to be available to us through, at least this point, at two FY '24. So as you can see, we started with the original Coronavirus Relief Act. There was a $1.2 million grant that we received. And that was really to get things back under control for PPE, for things to get kids back in school. The Coronavirus Relief Number Two was actually a formularic amount. We received X amount of dollars per student, which amounted to $411,000. And that, those funds are still available to us, and we'll be spending those over the course of the next coming months. The Technology Relief Funds were to address the remote learning, which came in right away. Ms. Spinney and her team did an outstanding job of putting forth a proposal. And that money was actually already used in all of those Chromebooks and access to the internet was provided for those students who were remote originally. The original Esser Fund, that's another $2 million. And that's what we're looking at. right now. Esser 2, which we'll be applying for for next year, is another $7.4 million. And then Esser 3, which will be the following school year at this point, is estimated right now at about $16.6 million. So, for a total of over $28 million in grant funds that have been made available to us. And again, I think it's really important for us to realize what these funds can be used for and cannot be used for. And it really is to address the emergency that we have been under for our children, for our students, for the, over the last year. Really looking at teaching and learning and looking to address the gaps that we have, that we know that children, being in the remote mode, have lost. So, really catching up on unfinished business can be used for high-quality instructional materials, professional development, cultural responsive practices, early literacy screening, early literacy screening and assessments, tutoring, which we've been involved with right from the beginning, and it will continue before and after school, as well as a robust summer school-type program being run this summer. But these programs can be run into the future as well. And then again, providing the individual school leaders and school buildings with the necessities that they need to make sure that they're addressing all of their needs in their building. As we look to return again next year and even currently, you know, really engaging our parents, our families to get our students back in school. Currently, we have approximately 35, 30% to 35% of our students who continue to be remote. And we know that we'll be doing a lot of work over the course of this summer and fall to make sure that we can get everybody back into our buildings safely. Again, address the needs of our low-income children, students with disabilities, English-language learners, racial and ethnic minorities, homeless, foster care. And this includes outreach and service delivery for addressing all of these needs. There is a stipulation that $10,000 has to be spent on mental health services, which we have been doing and will continue to do. Obviously, the educational technology, remote learning. You know, I think a critical piece to recognize is this, these funds can be used to address the facilities and the school ventilation systems and improving those ventilation systems and getting them back up to what they should be in the modern era and also under the COVID I have another slide next which will show some of the line items where we've actually spent the money, but really looking at, you know, to address the PPE and all the needs that we have in our buildings as we continue through the remainder of this year, through the summer, and I'm sure next year as well. You know, things that the Esser Funds cannot be used for, you know, bonuses and merit pay are things that these funds cannot be used for, subsidizing, offsetting executive salaries and things to that effect. And then expenditures related to state or local teacher and faculty and unions and associations. So, it's pretty clear, although what we can use the funds for are pretty wide open, and we have a pretty well-developed strategic plan to do that over the course of the next three years. But then there are things that we cannot use the funds for. Kelly Cavalo was nice enough to give us a quick summary of the funds that we've allocated already. And we know we've talked a lot about the facility supplies, the air purifiers, needs that we had for remote learning, different subscriptions for online services, including tutoring services, and then some of the other pieces that we need within our buildings to address, particularly when we weren't in the buildings, in that we were working remotely and still being able to provide even just postage for a clerical who were working from home. The cleaning needs will continue. Professional development will be a critical piece. Special education tuition. So, you can see the original COVID Relief Fund has been spent down. That was the one, original $1.2 million. We have an estimated $1.4 million remaining, which will need to be spent by the end of this year in September, which we are currently working on now, and we have a number of projects underway. And then again, looking forward to developing a strategic plan to use the $7.4 million and the $16.6 million over the next two years to really address the needs of the facilities.
Could I ask a question?
You may.
The air purifiers, are there costs that, you know, recur every year? Or is it kind of a one-and-done? You have it, and it has a lifespan for a while?
So, excellent question, Jean. The air purifiers, all the units that we currently have, will need replacement. There are two types of filters. One is very expensive. For the carrier units, I believe they were 4,000 hours. And then there's a smaller unit, which will be replaced typically two to three times a year, and that's like a $50 to $75 investment per machine. So, we'll be adding those in with the remaining $1.4 so that we know as we move forward that we, all the air purifiers that we have in buildings, which I see a really deliberate need to have them to remain in classrooms, even under, as we deal with the coronavirus. I mean, it does filter air for pollutants that come through the windows, the windows are open, and we know that we're in pollen season. So, there are lots of things that this will, that the air purifiers can help us with to improve the air quality in our classrooms and throughout the schools.
I just want to commend you for jumping on the water so quickly. And I think everything we understand now, as the science evolves, right, of understanding it, it's all about ventilation. So, I mean, obviously, PPE as well, but so it's good to know that the plan is to just be as robust with that next year as you're planning. That's good. Thanks.
So, again, now looking at our, at least the preliminary budget, and we've discussed this several times here at the committee, you know, the governor's proposed budget with $60.8 million for Chapter 70, and that was a $3.1 million increase over last year. If you remember, FY21, it was a $1.1 million increase over the previous year. As the budget makes its way through the process at the state level, the House Ways and Means has proposed an additional $420,000, and that would be local to Fitchburg. It has not been approved. It's in the form of a grant that we would be able to be, apply for, and that, I believe that's not until December if it was to go through. And I think it's also important to note that there's the pushback to this amount of money under a grant. We're really looking to increase Chapter 70 as opposed to small amounts of money that will certainly help, but are not included in the Chapter 70 formula. And then also, I think notably that in the House, they came up with another $129,000, which would be for charter school reimbursement, which would help decrease the indirect costs at the city level. Neither of these two have been approved. Certainly, at this point, they're just proposed through the, at the House level. So, we keep focusing in on this $3.1 million of Chapter 70 that we have available. And again, our preliminary numbers, and we're looking at our school spending summary. You know, the school budget in FY21 was $63.2 million. We're looking at a school budget of $66.8, almost $8 million, and that's an increase of $3.5 million for our school budget. Some notable increases, we have about a million dollar, little over a million dollar increase in transportation costs. You know, it's important to recognize that our FY21 was based on 170 days, not 180 days, and it didn't include a summer program from last year. So, we're, you know, looking at going back to the 180 days plus summer school. And also, we have an increase of four buses. You know, the, we've discussed at this committee, too, the expanded learning time at Longchamp. There's been a significant cut at the state level of, from $11 million down to $4 million, and there's some understanding that the individual districts will absorb or and/or pay for this through the SOA funds. But that's an increase of $1 million in transportation. And also, you know, at least preliminary numbers from the city, their indirect costs, which we've discussed for retirement and for healthcare, is about $1 million as well. So, you know, the subtotal leaves us at about $2.4 million, and that's the number that we're looking for, looking at as we start developing, you know, some firm-up, some numbers at our level. And just looking at our salary rollover costs, that will be factored into that, and it, with steps and lanes right now, we're looking at it, $600, almost $658,000 in salary rollover. We know this is a negotiating year, so this doesn't include anything moving forward. And it does include, you know, when we looked at this last year, it was about $1.1 million, but that also included the raises for this past year. So, as Bob mentioned earlier, and it's really important, I think Mr. Stevens had mentioned it, too, this 171-student decline. And I think this is what all districts are looking at right now. It amounts to $7, it amounts to $2.4 million loss in Chapter 70 funds. So, we were all hoping that at the state level, there'd be some means to either be a hold harmless and go back to, say, the 2019 enrollment levels, because these are our projected October 1st numbers. We were down 171 students this year's foundation budget. It was an average of $14,267 per pupil for a total of a loss of $2.4 million. And if you, if you add that to our estimated school direct spending line at this point at 2.4, it brings us back to about that $4.8 million range that we were talking about when SOA first came out. So, it's a significant difference. Looking at what are, and I think this goes back to the grant funds versus the Chapter 70 funds. Grants are not great to hang your hat on because we know that they will end at some point and that you don't want to create a funding cliff within the district to hire the folks that we need in our school buildings and then in 2024, when the Esser money is gone, be subject to some amount of layoffs. So, that's something that we're, you know, looking at very closely and strategically. So, again, that brings it, it's the $2.4 million, the direct spending, estimated school direct spending at this point. And with that salary rollover cost of $658,000, you know, we've got a net of about $1.768 million right now. That's the increase from FY21 to FY22. I put this slide in here again because I think it's really important for us to recognize the fact that, you know, as we look at utilizing, whether it's the grant funds or utilizing our Chapter 70, to really look at what our important pillars are. And it really is around accessibility. It is around equity, opportunity, growth, and achievement. And as Bob noted earlier, these are the four critical bullets that we are building our budget around as we speak with principals and as we look at the needs across the district. I don't know if folks had questions.
Well, I'll ask a question again. When you talk about thinking about, you know, the grants and the fact that this will eventually dry up.
Excuse me. Ms. LaBelle Pierce, we're having difficulty.
Okay.
You can, you can take that off.
Yeah. Is it better this way?
We can certainly pass it down.
This is what I do at school. I just open it like this. Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. It's a pain to take it off. I live with a mask on all day. It's just stuck on me at this point. So...
You can pass.
When you talk about thinking strategically about what happens when we take the money, you know, when the money dries up, what, what is the strategic thinking there? I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna expand probably our teaching force. We're gonna, we're gonna include programs that kids will continue to need. I'm trying to remember from years past what our prediction of student enrollment is in the younger grades. I'm just wondering, what is the strategy?
Well, I think from the, from an Esser perspective, you mean, and what do we do? Well, the Esser perspective, you know, the funding, as Craig summarized, is really, although there's some latitude, there's some restrictions. And the feds are really making sure that a district like, like us can invest in facilities, infrastructure, to make sure that we have good working ventilation systems.
Okay.
So, that is a big portion of our, of our plan. It will also help address, you know, the kind of the recovery and acceleration of learning for students post-COVID. So, that can be not only new teachers, but really kind of targeted teachers in terms of whether it be social workers, counselors. That's a targeted area where we probably will add staff funded by Esser versus like city funding, at least in the near term, to help with that. So, those are, I think, a couple of the main focuses that we've talked about. I think one of the challenges that we may face just in general is many, many districts will be looking for that same pool of talent, kind of as we talked about the recruiting plan update. There's not a big supply of teachers out there either. So, we're going to try to do whatever we can to be as competitive as possible and as attractive as possible as an employer. So, that's something that we're working on. And really, by doing some of the things that we're talking about, you know, hopefully we'll, people will find us attractive. And I think just in terms of a cost-of-living perspective, Central Mass is a lot less expensive than, you know, 495 East. So, you know, maybe we'll see some westward migration in this live-from-anywhere, work-from-anywhere type environment that seems to have begun during the pandemic. So...
Yeah. And I think a critically important, you know, question we all have is, is how many students will return next fall? You know, are we looking at 100%, you know, 170 students are plus going to come back, or is it 100? Because that will have a really deliberate impact on FY23. Because where I was a year with the, a year behind with the Chapter 70 based on next year's October 1st. So, we can hope that all 171 students come back plus, and then will that $2.4 million will, would be available in, you know, in FY23. I think that's the big question, you know. And I know that Eva's doing a lot of work trying to do her particularly Kinneagannon enrollment, tracking the numbers, looking at families and what their intentions are for return next year. You know, as the state is proposing, there is no remote opportunity for next year. We anticipate that 100% of our students will be in person in school, and that's what we're planning on right now.
Quick question. Have you compared these numbers for, you know, students not returning next year to surrounding districts? Has that been informing your process at all?
I have a question. Have we looked at surrounding districts' rates of return of, you know, their enrollment decrease?
I think everyone is in the same boat. I think all districts are really looking at, you know, tracking families. And in one of the slides that showed what Esser can be used for, it's this re-engagement strategy and having folks in the community, in the school district, really trying to get in touch with families and saying, okay, are you still here? Is your intention to come back next year? We know that many families have probably moved out, but we also know that many families have moved in. And if those are families that have young children, there's a good chance that they didn't, have not enrolled them yet. So, I think that is, you know, the $64,000 question. It's actually a $2.4 million question, is how many students will return come fall?
Okay.
Because again, some, some of the Esser Funds can be used for funding some of these strategies, but you don't want to create this funding cliff that, and, you know, when the grants run out, that you're going to be left with, with either massive layoffs or, or issues pertaining to the Chapter 70.
That makes sense. Thank you. Thanks.
Any other questions with regards to Mr. Shalfo's presentation? I think next steps.
Yeah.
We have some, another Subcommittee meeting next Thursday, which coincidentally is the day of the relays, so...
We can adjust that.
Okay. Thank you. And then two weeks from tonight, we'll have our first reading. We'll have another Resource Subcommittee meeting before the final reading, which is Monday, June 7th, which at that time will present or distribute the Budget Book, which will go over the work that we're doing, that gives more details to the pillars and commitments that we described early on and, as Craig summarized in the end. And also, just, you know, the line item... And also just, you know, the, the line item spending by each school, which we distribute along with just other information, factual information about the district.
So next up, we have, well, I'll say four action items also related to the budget and funding. Mr. Shelf, will you want to continue and continue on here?
We can do that, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
So the, back in front of the committee, or at least the full committee for approval, is the acceptance of the $755,049 and 0.06. And this was the Crocker insurance claim. We did vote on this at resource subcommittee back in, I believe it was late fall, early winter. It did not come to full committee, unfortunately, at that time. So we had to present it to full committee to accept that. And then the second action item is a request to transfer, and I think everyone has that in their packet. It's a total of $389,577. These are largely from lines that were not funded due to open positions. You know, we currently have across the district 23 open parrot positions that were never funded in this past year. The math coach at Memorial was also another position that went unfunded for the year. So we're requesting to transfer those line items into the instructional line.
Are we still waiting for any support from the state level for summer programs? Or for, you know, the learning loss gap to fill that with summer programs?
So last week, I think it was on Friday, correct? They announced, the governor announced that there will be about, what, $70 million slated for summer learning or summer camps for students.
Acceleration academies.
Acceleration academies. We have not received the exact details on what that money can be used for and what it will look like. But we are planning to host this summer, six, six-week summer program for our elementary and middle and high school students who are interested in participating.
But regardless of what those details look like for that plan, will this, will these funds still be allocated towards that, that objective that's stated here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Great.
Mr. Mayor?
The other, the other item we have up for action is the, we have the Laurel Street Warehouse Facility and the, the flat building, former flat building located on Winusknock Road. It's our intent to turn these two facilities back over to the city, and we're requesting for the committee's approval to move forward that process.
Ms. Reynolds?
Ms. Reynolds?
Yes, with regards to the, the first action item, I think that the way that it's worded, it's not illegal, because you have two action items in one, one request. I think it needs to be broken out.
What, what do you not think is legal about the first action item?
Yeah, that, that it has two action items within one thing. I think it needs to be broken out into, first, to accept the money, the request to accept the money. And then the, the second part would be to, what does it say there? To have the authority to accept these proceeds.
I don't understand.
I think she's talking about the second action item, right, Roseman?
21-62.
Yeah.
Whether we accept the money or how we spend it should be two different items. I think that's the contention. I don't think.
That's, that's fine.
For, exactly, 21-62. Accept the $755,000 of Crocker insurance claim proceeds and utilize these. I would, I think those should be broken into two. Like, accept would be one item, and then to utilize the funds for the purchase would be a second action item. As it's worded, I don't think that it's legal. I'd like an opinion of the city's attorney on that.
I, I didn't hear you again. Please repeat. Can you repeat? Could you repeat?
She said she was looking for your opinion on that, and she'd like the city's lawyer's opinion on that as well.
On what?
On whether this item should be broken into two separate, separate action items. Is there any? Yeah.
Isn't it cited that way? 21-64 and 21-62. Are those, isn't that breaking them into two?
I would agree.
One is the, one is the $755,000. The other is how to utilize those funds. That was, that was your request, and they're the two items. They are broken out. They're separate.
No, they're not broken up here.
So is, I guess, is, is the request to have two different votes?
Yes.
Right, right.
Yes, well, we can do that.
We can have two different votes.
Yep.
You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yep.
Well, we, we usually bundle action items. We'll take each one individually. How's that? Okay. All right, let's move forward.
Are you all set, Ben?
I believe that was, yep.
Okay.
We have to make a motion to reword that.
No. I'm, I'm sorry again, Ms. Reynolds. You made a motion for?
To break up that one into a separate, into two action items. One would be to accept the money. That would be the first action.
Yes, that's 21-61.
No, no.
No. I know. That's school calculus. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
21-62. And then 21-64.
Nope, on, on 62 to break it up into two.
So, so I think what you're asking is, is the, that we accept the $755,000 as one, and then make a second motion to what it will be used for.
Yes.
You've done it, yes.
But is that, is that an act, is that an item on the agenda?
I agree, Mr. Mayor. I think that's already broken into two items.
Yeah, it's there.
Number 64 clearly states that this is approved in actions number 62 and 63.
Thank you.
So I think, I think, Ms. Reynolds, if you look at the next item, what you want is there. It is two items.
Right.
Well, I, I would still make the request that it be viewed, and it's simple to just separate.
As I said, we're going to take each one individually, separate votes, okay?
But we have to make a, we have to do it, you know, the right way.
We are.
Would you would know?
How about if we amended 21-62 and to delete, to utilize these funds to purchase a K5 elementary reading curriculum as recommended by the superintendent?
Because it's covered under 64.
So I'll make a motion to amend action item 62 to read, accept the $755,049 and 0.06 of Crocker insurance claim proceeds.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Motion made to amend action item 21-62. Do I hear a second?
I second.
You seconded it. Okay, thank you, Peter. All in favor?
Can you, can you reread what the, what we're voting on right now again?
Accept the $755,04906 of Crocker insurance claim proceeds, period.
Period.
No, not to accept. It's to change the, this first thing item to do is to change the wording. We agree to change it, and then we vote on whether we accept it.
That's what we're doing. That's what we're doing. Voting to amend.
Right.
Right.
The wording.
Right.
And that's what, that's the motion that's on the table. Motion was made and seconded to amend, to read, accept the $755,04906 of Crocker insurance claim proceeds, period.
Yes.
Yes. Motion was made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous.
I'll make a motion that we, no, we're all set.
Yeah.
We're all set there. No, no, now.
We amended, now we'd have a vote.
Right, yeah.
You wish to do this now?
Yes, I will.
I would like to speak to the issue.
Let, let me make the motion first.
Okay.
To accept the $755,019.06 of Crocker insurance claim monies.
Speaking on the motion, Ms. Reynolds?
Yes, I would like to ask, what authority we have to receive this money? And, and who, yes, what authority is, who is receiving it? The school committee, the, specifically, who would be receiving it?
The city council appropriated these funds to the school committee during a city council meeting. We are accepting these funds as in a reimbursement for the out-of-pocket costs that we made during the roughly two years of Crocker, that was closed and being rehabilitated.
Remediation that went on, right.
And what, what expenditures did you experience that we've now been reimbursed for? What were the, what was the million dollars or the $755,000? What was this?
It was for all expenses that we had paid for out of pocket. I don't say out of pocket, but out of school district operating funds. Separately, the insurance company directly paid the cost to remediate and reconstruct. But during that time period, we paid expenses like electricity, rent, and other expenses during that time period, technology, that were all considered reimbursable expenses.
And that, that's broken out somewhere?
We have submitted, yes, that was submitted to the insurance company. It was audited by their accountants, and that was the amount that they approved to reimburse us for, as eligible expenses.
Was the sale of any copper involved in any of this?
Was what?
Copper? Was this, was there any sale of copper involved in this?
Any sale of copper?
Yes.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Copper? What?
This is just the flooding incident that we had.
All right. Do you have further questions, Ms. Reynolds?
No, so for my clarity, so the authority that we have in accepting this money, this money's going to come to the, to the school committee? And the school committee is going to give it to you, to the superintendent?
Well, the school committee is.
Went to the city council first.
The city council first.
Wait a minute. Just, just say those steps for me again. We're voting to accept the insurance money.
Right, that the city council has approved as insurance claim reimbursement due to us as we paid for all these expenses from our budget.
So the school, you're seeing this, the city council has already entertained this claim.
They have entertained this, and they have appropriated this amount of insurance claim proceeds to the school committee to, for acceptance. And as it is part of, would fall under budget, the school committee in its role is approving these funds to accept this.
To accept it on your behalf or, and then turn it over to you? Or, I just wanted to understand where the authority laid?
Yep, yep.
And ultimately, it laid with the city council? Well, he said the city council approved that the school committee receive, accept these funds from the insurance.
Yes. They agreed to appropriate it to the school committee, yes.
And so I'm assuming that the authority then, if the city council had approved this, that the school committee does have the authority to accept it on your behalf? Am I right so far?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then, well, it's an insurance claim. Oh, oh, wait a minute now. So who paid for the insurance?
Who pays for the insurance?
Yeah, yes. That, that allows us to then access this money. Who paid for the insurance?
I believe the city pays the insurance.
The city pays?
Yes.
So shouldn't the money go back to the city?
No, because it was a school, it was, the spending that occurred, occurred out of our direct school spending budget.
Okay.
So if the city had paid this $755,000, the city would get the reimbursement, but it came from our departmental budget.
From the district budget?
Yes.
And that was all okay with us, with the council?
Yes.
It was all, step by step was overseen by the council?
Yes, by the council and the city auditor, and also the city solicitor, who was involved in dealing with the insurance company on this claim.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for clarifying it.
Move the, move the question.
Question was, was made. Now, we need a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to, this, we're voting on 21-62, right? All in favor?
Yes. Aye. Aye.
All opposed? None in opposition? Thank you. Want to continue, Bob?
Well, I guess, yeah, do you want to go back in sequence then?
Yeah.
We have the calendar.
Right.
Well, you have to go, we have to vote on the second motion.
We're going to go back. I make a motion to.
We don't need a motion to go back to sequence? We just, we just restore the order of the agenda.
I'm just making a motion to approve the reading of the calendar.
All right, motion to.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. We just broke that up into two parts.
No.
The first part was.
Was to amend and then to vote on it, which we did.
Accept the money, and then the second part, oh, I see. You want to jump down to the.
We'll get to that one.
Want to cover the first action item?
We'll get, we'll get to that one soon, Ms. Ms. Reynolds.
I'll second the motion.
All right, motion made and seconded to approve 21-62. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Next.
Make a motion to accept action item 21-63.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to, to accept 21-63.
To the motion, speaking to the motion?
Speaking on the motion, Ms. Reynolds?
Yes. So it's been explained here that we do have the authority to accept these proceeds. And why is the purchase of a new curriculum, but I, I noticed that you used another term there rather than a new curriculum?
What'd she talk about?
The, the best use of the money, what other competing needs are there?
Well, educating our students and providing them with the best curriculum possible is the best use of these funds.
Point of order? We're on 21-63.
63.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we're approving the recommendation to approve the line item transfer.
We're just approving this to be.
We're approving, we're approving number 263.
It'll be addressed on, about spending the money.
She was speaking to the next action item.
21-64.
Right, we're on 63.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Ms. Reynolds, we're on 21-62. That was the motion made and seconded.
Okay.
All right.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, we're actually on 21-63.
Yeah.
That's the one we've made, a motion and.
Seconded and accepted. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, and it's unanimous? Same.
Make a motion to accept action item 21-64.
Second the motion.
Motion made and seconded to accept 21-64. Speaking on the motion?
My turn? I was just wondering what other competing needs there were. I mean, this, this was used, this money was out of the pocket of the district's spending money to, for construction costs, replacement costs. So wouldn't it go back into that? I don't know. I'm just asking, what other competing needs were there for that amount of money?
Well, we had a list of priorities for, you know, educating our students. And curriculum is an item that, given our, our budget, where it's largely net school spending, our curriculum line item is not that large, looking at the needs of our students and how we're trying to accelerate learning for all our students, English language learners, and to narrow the achievement gaps, the opportunity gaps, and the access gaps. This was the highest priority curriculum investment that Assistant Superintendent Thompson identified before we had identified the particular program. And it was really after the, you know, him convening a 18-member panel that the product was selected. So this is something that helping our students learn how to read K through 5 is the biggest investment that we can make district-wide, because the benefits will be reaped by the district at middle school and high school level. So we'll have higher levels of student literacy. So we'll have higher levels of student literacy throughout the system in coming years.
Here, here.
Yay.
Any further questions? Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Motion made and seconded on the table, 21-64. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Next.
Make a motion to accept action item 21-65.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept 21-65. Approve the superintendent's recommendation to access the Laurel Street Warehouse building located at 253 Laurel Street to the city of Fitchburg. Any discussion? Yes.
Just, just a point, Mr. Stevens and I go way back on building needs subcommittee. We have given many buildings back to Fitchburg that we needed to. But it is one thing to, to give, it is another to receive. So just reminding that the city council will need to receive this officially. Thus ends the sermon.
I, I would, I would venture to say that we, the council will accept it. I'm not thrilled about accepting it. But I, I believe I know what to do with it. When I get it. Okay. So, yes, was there any, all right, all in favor? Oh, yes, Mr. Walsh.
So did the school committee already seed the land where the Rollstone Street School once stood? Or does that include the entire plot of land that now exists where the only structure is the Laurel Street building?
I believe, I believe there were, there were two different parcels.
Yeah.
But that's all city. It's all gonna be city.
That's all gonna be city, yeah.
Thank you. So a, motion was made and seconded to adopt 21-65. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Next.
Motion to approve action item 22-66.
Motion made.
Second.
And seconded to adopt 21-66. Approve the superintendent's recommendation to access the Flack Building located at 44 Winusnock Road to the city of Fitchburg. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. We are now scheduled for executive session to discuss potential strategy with respect to collective bargaining of litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining of litigating position of the public body in the chair, so declares we will come out of executive session only to adjourn. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to move into executive session.
Motion made and seconded to move into executive session. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you.